Hey Nick? Can you hear me? It's Marlene.
We can hear you.
Yeah, hi Nick, how are you? I was gonna say, a couple of the students were able to join, so I just forwarded them the link that I had, is that okay?
Um, sure.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Middletown Board of Supervisors to order, and if we could rise to pledge the flag. Ms. Quarble, roll call.
Mr. Tosti.
Here.
Mr. Kizak.
Here.
Ms. Payne? Is she not on yet? She's, oh, she's not coming at all. Sorry, Ms. Payne's not here this evening. Ms. Strauss?
Here.
We also have in attendance Township Manager, Mrs. Tulley Coles, Township Solicitor, Mr. Esposito, and Township Engineer, Mr. Kessler, in attendance, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quarble. Moving on to number two, announcements and special items. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, October 4th, at twenty, 2021, at 7:00 PM here in the hall. We do have a couple of events coming up. So we have our Middletown Township shredding event, which will be this Saturday at 9:00 AM till noon, and that'll be located at the Oxford Valley Mall. Enter at Fourth Street and follow the signage. There will be three boxes per vehicle. Covid-safe places, safe, place boxes in your trunk, stay in your car, and wear a mask. This will be sponsored by the Middletown Township Inspire Credit Union and the Oxford Valley Mall. We also have our Vietnam Veterans Dedication this Sunday, September 26th, at 11:30. This will be at Veterans Park on Veterans Highway in Middletown Township. Veterans Highway will be closed both ways from Trenton Road to Highland Park Entry from 10:30 to 1:30. This memorial will include ninety-five names of servicemen from Lower Bucks, including ninety-four killed in action and one missing in action. The memorial sculpture is being created by Abby Gublin, a highly regarded creator of works memorizing, memorializing members of the armed services, whose works include the Corpsman Memorial and the Peace Corps Statue at the Beirut Memorial. Both are at Camp Davis in Jacksonville, North Carolina, and the North Carolina Vietnam Memorals on the grounds of the state capitol in Raleigh. The memorial will honor sons of Benzalm Township, Bristol Borough Bristol Township, Falls Township, Yumville Borough, Langhorn Borough, Langhorn Manor Borough, Lower Makefield Township, Lower Southampton Township, Middletown Township, Marsville Borough, Newtown Borough, Newtown Township, North Hampton Township, Pendale Borough, Upper Makefield Township, Upper Southampton Township, and Wrightstown. If you are planning to go to this event, the roads will be closed and parking will be at Carl Sandberg and Schweiker, and then they will bus you over to the event. And then we also have our Fifth Annual Parkland Fest Community Day, which will be Saturday, October 2nd, 2021, from 1:00 to 4:00. This will be located at Firefighters Park. Live performance by the Uptown String Band, games, vendors, food trucks, and live music. And we did approve the beer guarding for this event too, didn't we? Correct. So if you're interested in any of the vets, please join us. Next on the agenda will be public comment for non-agenda items. If you come to the mic, please state your name and your address. Okay. Moving on to consent agenda items. Letter A, consideration of authorizing payment of September 20, 21, 2021 bills list in the amount of $571,894.16. Letter B, consideration of approving the September 7th, 2021 minutes of the public meeting of Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Letter C, consideration of enacting resolution number 21-24R, Towns Against Graffiti Joint Grant Submission. Letter D, consideration of approving payment certificate number two for the 2021 road paving project in the amount of $760,669.64 to James D. Morrissey for completed work, which incorporates change order number three in the amount of negative, negative four dollars and fifty cents for reduced quantities. Letter E, consideration of approving payment certificate number seven for the Langhorn Gables Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of $42,920.68 to CDU Stormwater Maintenance and Management System, LLC, for completed work. Letter F, consideration of approving change order number four in the amount of $2,500 for the Langhorn Gables Drainage Improvement Project. And letter G, consideration of resolution number 21-31R, authorizing application of the 2021 Pico Green Region Open Space. With that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda items?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? Please state to the mic and state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Ellen Gordon, my address is 758 Cypress Avenue, Langhorn Gables. And I want to make a public comment about the storm drainage management program. You know, we've lived all summer with terrible drainage, the grass never took. And I understand they're gonna come out and do that, which is great. I'm also concerned about my driveway. So I agreed to let them come onto my easement to better our community for many neighbors who sustained flooding over and over again. I do not get flooding in my basement, but I approve that to help everybody else. And they've left my driveway looking like a patchwork. I don't think it's right that one property owner should have to take that, pay the price of bettering the whole community. I think they should pave my driveway and make it all one color.
Um, you, you came before us.
I did come in July, and I misunderstood. Apparently you had an item on the agenda for the amount of five thousand and some odd dollars, and I thought it was to cover that, because I've gotten bids and that's about the going price to do my driveway. But I just talked to Mr. Ennis tonight and he said that was actually for a bill in arrears for the patchwork.
Correct.
So I, I misunderstood that. I thought that you were going to handle the driveway.
No, I don't believe we ever said we would handle the driveway. I believe, and correct me, Mr. Kessler if I'm wrong, that we were going to fix the area around the driveway, but we were not going to address the driveway.
And that's what I came to complain about last night, last time, and nobody addressed that directly and said that it was the payment for what was already completed. So really, my statement is to warn the community, when you agree to let the township do something, they're not gonna make you whole. And that's not right.
Yeah, Mr. Tosti, I'll add that the, that change order that you speak of that was done previously was the driveway restoration at your property there, which is at the end of the Paper Street where it comes on to Cypress. So the original contract had them coming off of Cypress into the Paper Street and restoring where the new inlet is located along the gutter line there. It was discussed that some disturbance was done back more from the roadway and the driveway. And we worked with township staff to, and the contractor to identify how far back they had kinda disturbed and had equipment across the driveway. And we took it a bit further and had a clean saw cut there that goes across.
Yeah, I'm well aware of what it looks like.
Okay.
It, it really does not look nice.
I would argue it's not a patchwork, but it is a clean cut back from the roadway additional area. And they repaved and blacktopped that driveway. The rest of the driveway is blacktopped, but it was never really the intent to do the entire entirety of the driveway, because they'd never had equipment going back the full length up to your garage. It was the area that was disturbed by the contractor during the work, and we took it a bit further to make sure it was a clean, even saw cut where it would be restored.
Right, and it's not just at the bottom. It's like a triangle up one side. And they put the drainage thing right in the middle of my driveway. Everybody else's property, they put it off to the side in the grass. But for my property, I feel like I'm driving into an apartment complex because it's right in the middle of my driveway. And then we have this patchwork around it. And, you know, you say that you patched it and you did, the patch job is fine, but it still does not look good at all. And I just really feel it's unfair as a property owner that's paid taxes here. You know, my dad built that house in 1963, it's been here. He put the darn road in, for heaven's sakes, it was a dirt road. So, you know, I'm really upset about that. And it, and it just, it's, for resale property, it looks like hell.
Yeah, and I do recall at the time, because the contractor is under prevailing wages with the contract that we have with the township for the, for the project, it was discussed that even before they did this change order, it would probably be a better option to go the route of, of a private company that would do driveway restoration if you needed additional driveway.
Yeah, his comment to me is, "You can't afford us because we're union." When I addressed that, I said, "Let me know."
I'm not sure what he said to you, but I can, I can just say that the contract with the township, the square yardage and the driveway pavement that we do, for a private homeowner, it's probably a better option to go about looking at a contractor that would do just residential work.
Right.
So I know that wasn't, it doesn't sound like that was pursued. We did add to the contract to have him restored back further than was originally on the plans because of the equipment that was used to get back to the Paper Street. But at this point, we consider what he took back and repaved. That por, that portion of the project is not intended to be revisited for any kind of heavy equipment. So that, that's the limits of what we're gonna do on the driveway repaving at that point.
I understand your description of it, and I do understand that you did what you just said, but it's still not right that one property owner has to pay the price for that community improvement. I just really feel that's unfair, and maybe the township should pay to have my driveway redone by a private contractor. Because you're right, he did a very small portion of my driveway. For the same price, I could do the whole thing. And I wouldn't have normally redone my driveway this year.
So we, we cut the driveway and then repaired part of the driveway, is that what?
Yep. I have sent pictures to the township.
Do you have pictures?
I don't have them with me right now, but Mr. Kessler has them, Mr. Ennis has them.
Okay, can, can you?
Of the damage, I could send them.
Can you email them to us?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, alright, if you aim, let us look at it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, four zero. Moving on to number five, presentation of the 2021 Fire Service Study by Dynamex Consulting Group. Stuart, you're.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Supervisors, Madam Manager, good evening. My name is Stuart McCutcheon, and here with me is Mary Ellen Harper, representing Dynamex Consulting Group. And we're here to do a presentation to you for the overview and findings of the fire services study for the township. Going into this, just to clarify any expectations, this was an evaluation of fire services within the township as a whole and an individual study of companies. There are four fire companies, EMS company as well as the fire code inspector employees that are all providing varying levels of emergency services. This is looking more as a holistic view, not as individual companies. And then second, this is a, an evaluation of only those companies. It does not include mutual aid companies or other resources immediately surrounding, because we wanna do an evaluation of what the township has internally, not what could potentially be utilized externally.
Mr. McCutcheon, can you just stand a little closer to the mic so people can hear you? And then if people want to thank, that's.
Is that better?
That works a whole lot better, thanks.
Outstanding. I was trying not to project too hard, it wasn't exactly how sure, loud I was coming through. Alright, and so as I said, my name's Stuart McCutcheon, with me is Mary Ellen Harper. And so the purpose of this study was do, do an assessment of the service delivery and the services provided to the community. And then do a gap analysis from that and compare it to best practices. And so that way we could provide you an evaluation of where you at today, how do you compare to national standards? And then subsequent to this, it'll allow you to determine where do you wanna be and some of the paths to get there. And as I said, we evaluated the system as a whole, not as individual companies or as, or any outside resources. For stakeholder input, we came in June, spoke to the fire companies, EMS companies, supervisors, township administrators, so to pull together and have a total feel and idea of how all these fire companies are working, how they're working with each other, how they're working as a whole, and different thoughts and opinions about that. So quickly do an overview of service delivery. For the first column is the Middletown Township Fire Code Inspectors. We can see that there are jumps, they started midway through 2018, so there was obviously a jump to the next year. And then the next year was 2020, there was some additional elements with Covid, so that call volume was reduced some once we evaluated it. And then we have the rest of the companies. Now with this being said, each fire company maintains its own fire records in varying levels of detail and accuracy. And so to try to do a apples-to-apples comparison, we had to make certain assumptions, which caused some data to be ruled out. So for example, in some companies, if I didn't have a dispatch time and an arrival time, I couldn't reliably determine whether or not that was an actual incident, where others may have not included that and had that as their actual incident. So these numbers are gonna vary some, but it's just the nature of trying to compare disparate groups and evaluate them all holistically. Also included this, we decided to include the Pendale Middletown Emergency Squad. They weren't originally included into the scope of work, however, they are in reality in the same boat as your fire companies. And if something were to happen to this group, it would be just as devastating as it's any of the others. And so throughout the report, you'll see them appear here and there to try to draw some attention to, this is also part of the fire rescue system, and some attention needs to be addressed to that. Temporal variation, this is where we're looking at how the calls go through day. You can see through some of the jagged peaks throughout this, there were some data quality issues throughout. But generally speaking, the majority of your calls for service are going to happen from about eight o'clock in the morning until about eight o'clock at night, Monday through Friday. This is a hotspot analysis, this doesn't tell you how many calls actually occurred, but instead how close the calls were relative to each other. And it, what it does provide is where are areas of densest activity. And so over here in our commercial corridor, you can see that whether it's over a multi-year period or it's that busy time, 8/8/8P, this is where the highest density of activity is occurring. This is just a quick overview of NFPA 1720, this is national standard, or one of the national standards we applied to you. You're in urban area, you have more than a thousand people per square mile. And so with the standard, and again, this is a goal, not necessarily a must, but fifteen firefighters within nine minutes of additional dispatch, ninety percent of the time. This is our projected four and eight-minute travel time. Just to give you an idea of some of the gap analysis, we had our hotspot appearing here. And right now, there are no fire stations located within that four-minute travel time of that area. The reason for that is because the fire, the fire companies originally developed within the boroughs where the people lived. At the time when these developed, there, there wasn't any infrastructure there. However, over time, conditions have changed, and I think that was one of the drivers behind doing this fire study, is let's evaluate where we came from, where we're at today, and what are the things that we can do to improve for tomorrow. This is just an overview of ISO, Insurance Services Office, and they come through every few years and apply a rating to the community. And so, once again, this is our engine travel time, mile and a half. We can see we've got a gap in this area, and then the various other charts that go along with that. This is call concurrency, this is how often, when calls are occurring, how many calls are occurring at any time. About two-thirds of the time, when someone is responding to an incident, there's only one incident occurring, and that's a good thing. However, the other one-third of the time, there's multiple, multiple incidents happening. And so that's important as a metric to monitor over time, because as that single incident number begins to drop and multi-incident increases, that's that much fewer resources you have available. Because really, if to boil it down to its essence in the fire service, there's only really two problems. Either you can't get there from here because the fire station's too far away, or there are not enough resources available to respond to the demand within that zone. This is a response time continuum, and so NFPA 1720 uses response time. Just to give you a breakdown, call processing, turnout, and travel time equal the total response time. So when you might place a 911 call, from the time you place that call and hit send until the time the first unit arrives on scene, that's the total response time. That's the experience that your community is experiencing when they request assistance. Call processing is when they pick up at the dispatch center until they dispatch the first unit. Turnouts from the time the unit is dispatched until it's actually rolling en route to the call. And travel times from en route till arrives on scene. Turnout time and travel time for a combination of volunteer departments is response time. And because again, of data quality issues, the only metrics we could really pull out universally and compare apples to apples was that response time. I included the emergency squad as well, just for a frame of reference. But the total for all incidents is about eleven minutes. One of the data quality issues is rounding off of numbers. We're not sure if they were rounded up or rounded down or how that was accomplished. But moving forward, we suggest and recommend a unification of these record management systems and some quality assurance analysis to improve the data quality that you're collecting. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mary Ellen Harper for the summary findings.
Thank you, good evening. So the main message I wanna convey as it relates to this project is that you have a very dedicated group of firefighters, both paid and volunteer, that have really stood up to the challenge of providing an increased demand for service with a decreasing number of volunteer firefighters. They're good people, they're doing good work, the community appreciates them. And I think of everything we're gonna tell you tonight, that's really the takeaway message. What we are gonna tell you also is that we feel very strongly that the Middletown Township really needs to actively engage with the volunteer fire companies and create a system that's for the good of the entire community. You're going to see that nationally, statewide, and in the county and in the township, the report shows that numbers of volunteer firefighters are on the decline. That's just happening everywhere. I don't know that you're gonna stop that, but I think with intervention of the township to help the volunteers to make their job easier to volunteer, you can slow that rate and keep the volunteers for as long as possible. So I'm gonna give you a summary of first, the long-term recommendations, and then some of the short-term recommendations. You know, first and foremost, you know, while there's many recommendations in the report, the two top priorities are the ones that need to be addressed first, because if we don't address the top priorities, none of the rest of those things are gonna matter. And that would be the identity of the fire service. You have a combination system, it's evolved over time. There's a lot of decisions that need to be made as far as what do you wanna be? Do you wanna be a career department supported by volunteers? Do you wanna be a volunteer department supported by career firefighters? Do you wanna be four independent volunteer fire companies, independent of the township? Or do we want one unified system? So there's a lot of options, none of them are wrong. The best fit for your community is the one that works for your people. I would tell you that as we went through the system, you know, two of the types of fire departments that we see are combination and dual. A combination department is where the volunteers and the paid firefighters are integrated together, same chain of command, same equipment, same system, they work as partners. A dual department is where you run a paid department and volunteer departments, and they operate independently. Right now, you, as a township, have more of the characteristics of a dual fire department, but because of the way it's being managed, I would tell you that that is probably the biggest critical weakness in your current system, because that communication's not going back and forth between those various entities. And, and that's gonna be probably the weakness that leads to the detriment of the volunteer system if it's not addressed. So we did talk about the identity of the fire service. Once you decide what you wanna be, it's imperative that all levels of the organization are communicated, understand that, and make decisions relative to that. You know, if you're a career department supported by volunteers or a volunteer department supported by career, that's gonna set your priorities. And it's important that from that brand-new firefighter coming in the door, through all the volunteers, all the way up to the elected officials, that you all agree on what that model's going to be and that you make all of your decisions financially, policy-driven, to support whatever model you select. And then we have the mission and priorities. So, you know, when we look at the volunteer companies that exist, they're all here for the same mission fundamentally, which is to serve and protect the community. But when we look at our call volumes, you know, we've got sixty, eighty percent EMS calls, fires are on the decline, we really need to kinda tighten up the mission and decide what level of service do you wanna provide? Is it basic firefighting? Is it heavy search and rescue, and to what extreme? Because once you've identified that mission and decided to draw a line around it, it helps eliminate scope creep. And scope creep is a true threat to volunteers, because every time you add a mission to the fire department and you add an additional service, there's a demand for more training. And we're taking more time for the volunteers away from their families to come do training for calls. And it's important to balance out the demand for service with the type of training that you're gonna ask them to do. So, once you identify your mission, vision, and values, and you look at that, the important thing to realize is that is going to be dynamic. You're going to have demand for service continue to change. As people come into your community, they're gonna require services, volunteers decline. You know, the mission of what you're able to do and what you want to do should be reevaluated regularly, and you should all just make sure you're all on the same page and you're moving in the same direction. The second big issue that really needs to be addressed beyond everything else is trust and communication. Anytime you have multiple agencies, the communication becomes more complicated. So with four volunteer fire companies and a township fire department and a township, you know, you really do need to develop a regular, consistent communication plan. People should know what is gonna be communicated to them, when they're gonna get it, and expect that they're gonna have certain levels of information. Because that hasn't necessarily happened consistently over the years, there's a sense of mistrust. It's not necessarily anybody did anything, it's just that the communication wasn't there to get everybody on the same page. And I think until you can really develop a strong communication plan and get everybody on the same page, it's going to be a struggle for the township. I will tell you that at every meeting we attended, both with paid and volunteer people, we heard from the firefighters themselves saying that they were just tired. They were tired of the drama, they were tired of just not knowing, they were tired of all the ups and downs, and they were really looking at this study as their last chance. Usually we tell clients that, you know, fire services move slowly. I would tell you that while you need to be slow and calculated in your overall response, your firefighters are going to need to see some communication changes and some things happening relatively quickly, because, you know, these things have been happening for so long, they're just, they're tired. So the summary of the short-term recommendations, we did them into six subject areas. I didn't wanna hit you with a hundred recommendations all at once, but what we did do is divide them into six basic areas. The first one is personnel management, and that's because the people are obviously the most important aspect of the fire department. When you get into personnel management, there's very specific recommendations in the report. Again, talking about identifying your mission, vision, and values. You've got some questions to answer as far as the future role of your fire inspectors. They were hired as inspectors, it's a civilian position. As volunteer numbers have dwindled, they've taken on additional responsibilities, including emergency response during the day. You just need to decide if that's truly gonna be their function, and if it is, job descriptions, contracts, all of those things need to be updated accordingly. We do recommend a reorganization of the township's Department of Fire and Emergency Management. The span of control within that area right now is out of whack. You have way too many people reporting to a single supervisor. We, we need to reorganize that just to make sure that we're supervising people correctly. There is a need to update policies, you've got many different agencies operating off of different policies. We need one standardized, updated policy. We are recommending an annual medical evaluation. Again, firefighters are the most important resource you have. Let's keep them safe, let's get them baseline medical evaluations and then monitor them. They're providing a service to the community, the least we can do is assure that for them. We are recommending a fire services safety committee. This would be a group of firefighters that work together, evaluate injury recommendation numbers, and make sure that training aligns with it and that we're doing things as safely as we possibly can. Another recommendation is that the volunteer firefighters need to be included in the pre-planning process. Right now, that's a function handled by the daytime staff. There are many calls that volunteers go to without the daytime staff. So we need to find a way to include them in that process and make sure that all of the information obtained during pre-plans is available to the volunteer firefighters. And as Stuart mentioned before, we are recommending a new record management system. You know, the, the data-driven decisions are really difficult to make when the data's not accurate and it's not aligning, because it's coming out of four different systems. Second area that we were making recommendations is service delivery. A community risk assessment really should be conducted. You have a lot of interesting things going on in this community as far as malls and amusement parks, and they create a lot of different types of calls. Not every call should get the same response. We should be looking at the hazard and deciding what the appropriate number of resources are, and sending more resources to significant events and less resources to ones that are not quite so serious. False alarms is an issue. When we look back at your numbers and breakdown, twenty-five percent of all the calls your fire department's going on right now were false alarms. That's a code enforcement issue, we need to get out into the community, talk to them, figure out what's going on, and minimize that. Because every time we put a fire truck on the road, we're risking accidents, we're calling volunteers away from home, we're creating wear and tear on the trucks, and that's not the best use of resources.
Can I ask you a question on that, right there? You said that's a code enforcement issue, how, how is that a code enforcement?
I think in looking at the numbers, and we only had limited data, again, a lot of what you had going on were alarm malfunctions. So when we look at code enforcement and fire alarms, you're getting somebody in there making sure the alarms are maintained and taken care of. Absolutely. We talked about the deployment of your paid fire inspectors. You know, when we look at where the demand for service is during the day, we probably need to better align the deployment area to where the demand for service is. And talked about improving data collection, again, those seconds are a big deal. You're losing a lot of information when you round your responses to the minute. And then establishing performance objectives. As a community, you need to decide what is the level of service that you want to offer, and then regularly evaluate your data so that if trends change and numbers are getting different, you can add resources into the system to maintain the level of service that you pick. Third area is going to be staffing. You know, we looked at these indicators for change, and as we're telling you again and again, volunteer firefighters are on the decline. So we're going to need to start planning to bring in more resources as volunteers decline. Training's the next area, we recommended some overhaul. You've got four different training programs plus the paid staff. We really need one township-wide training program that establishes a baseline level of training and helps everybody to move forward in the same direction. Capital assets is the fifth area. We have a complete inventory of equipment needs to occur. There's a lot of equipment in a lot of different places, and I'm not sure that everybody's aware of where it is. And then we need some assurances that it's being deployed in the best manner possible. We need to look at some alternatives to the apparatus lease program. Right now, you're leasing an apparatus. For the level of activity that your trucks are seeing during the day, you'd probably be better served by some alternative arrangements. There's gonna be a need for building maintenance plans. You know, these buildings are getting older. I, I know that you only own one of them, but there needs to be a plan just to make sure that the right buildings are being maintained. Same thing with the evaluation of fire apparatus. Fire trucks are getting more expensive, you do have a lot of apparatus. I would suggest a recommendation to look at all of the vehicles and perhaps eliminate. some of the ones that don't get regular use, or duplicate other vehicles in town. And then last but not least, you know, before you actually put a lot of money into any of the fire stations, I think it's really important to look at their overall location, and again, relation to the demand for service, and to make smart decisions about fixing the stations that are in the right places, and maybe consolidating or otherwise relocating stations that may not be. And then the last area that we had some recommendations was finance. As time has gone on, the Pennsylvania foreign fire insurance tax numbers have dwindled, that's creating a loss of revenue for the volunteers. So there needs to be a plan to figure out what we're going to do about that shortfall. The other thing I highly recommend is contracts with the volunteer fire companies. That's a safeguard for both the township and the volunteer firefighters. Everybody should be clear on who's going to do what, how they're going to be compensated for it, and what the responsibilities are. And then the capital plan funding sources, again, fire trucks are expensive. Let's just make sure there's a plan in place of who's going to pay for them and when. It would be in your best interest to do annual audits of the volunteer fire companies. It is required by law, but it's not necessarily being done in every case. And then closely monitor the growing OPEB liability, just to take that into account with future budgets. So with that, stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. I mean, I will, I will make a comment. You are correct, we do have dedicated men and women that are here in the township working at our fire stations. And I think the communication and trust, we have started to address that, to try to build for the future, so that we can get the communication and trust of the fire departments. I, I believe that we're moving in the right direction with this. Hopefully, I see a lot of men and women here from the fire departments, and I'm looking forward to working with them to try to implement this. One of the things that we heard consistently throughout this is that the same thing was done back in 1970, '71, and nothing was done during that since then. Last night, when we talked, one of the comments you made was, "We've got to stop living in the past." And I, I agree with you that we do have to stop living in the past. And I think we're looking forward to not re, or not redoing what we didn't do back 50 years ago. We are looking forward to working with our fire departments and trying to better the services of, for the, for the community. The biggest challenge any fire department has, and it's not only here in Middletown or in Bucks County, or in the state, it's all across the country, is the volunteers are lacking. And, and that's something that I think, as a community, as, as, as a county, there's ways of we can try to improve that, to try to make it better, so that we can start trying to recruit men and women to volunteer. But it's a, it's an uphill battle, as you know, it is an uphill battle. So, I want to thank you for, for the presentation and, and the work that you did, and I do look forward to working with the fire departments moving forward. I know, I know last night, they said that they wanted to take about a month or so to digest it all, and then get back. I'm looking forward to that, for, for you to get back to us, and then we can work together as a community, not just as a board, but as a community, to make the fire services better.
You mentioned two different models, one being the dual model and one being the combination model. Am I interpreting correctly that your recommendation for our township would be transitioning to a combination model?
Yes, sir.
That's the long-term plan or recommendation?
Absolutely. And the reason for that is, I think, you know, you've got a core group of dedicated volunteers, and it's in your best interest to harness them, bring them into the system, and keep them there for as long as they're willing to be here. But as a township, you're ultimately responsible for the provision of fire and rescue services. So by bringing them into a combination system, you'll have the ability to incrementally adjust as you lose volunteers, you can incrementally add paid firefighters, without having to change the system completely, you can just make those modifications within the system, and your infrastructure will be there.
Any other comments from the board?
And at this moment, you're saying we're completely dual?
No, I'm saying you exhibit more tendencies toward dual than combination. It's not exact, there are absolutely some ways that you're unified. You did have a position in place that was coordinating fire departments, but because of that lack of communication and that lack of coordination, you've kind of morphed into a dual fire department.
We have some work to do.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to...
I have one...
Go ahead, Amy.
I just have, I have one question, because we have so many of our dedicated volunteers in the audience. I know some of this is in your report, but can you talk a little bit about the specific recommendations that you have for the township to better support our volunteers? Because really bolstering that community is going to be the key to keeping a high standard of service for the township, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Absolutely. And what I would tell you is that, with a few exceptions, volunteer firefighters tend to volunteer, because they want to serve the community during fire and emergencies. What you have is a dedicated group of volunteers that are volunteering in so many other ways. They're volunteering to make sure there's toilet paper in the bathroom, they're volunteering to find funding for fire apparatus, they're volunteering to do all of these administrative recruitment and retention activities. And those are some responsibilities that the township is really well-positioned to take off of their backs, and allow them to spend the time they are volunteering, responding to calls, going to training, and making sure they have adequate resources.
I love that. So allowing them to specialize in the areas that really gets them fired up, and that they want to participate in, but hopefully, the township can provide more of that infrastructure and administrative support, if you will, to, to make their jobs easier.
Absolutely.
I just, I just wanted to make the comment that, first of all, I mean, I know a tremendous amount of time and effort went into this, and so we appreciate what you've delivered. You gave us what we asked for. And I also just wanted to make the comment generally to the community that we would not undertake an initiative like this without recognizing and acknowledging that there's, there's a self-critical analysis component to this, meaning, we as a township, we as a board of supervisors, recognize that we have to do a lot of looking inward at what we need to do better and do differently. And so, and you've given us a lot to work with, so thank you, we appreciate it. And like Mr. Tosti, the whole board, we look forward to working with all the fire companies moving forward.
Is there any comments from any of the men and women, or anybody in the public? I mean, I'd, I'd like to thank every one of you for your service to the township and to our community, because I know it goes outside of the township, it goes outside, it goes all in Bucks County. So what you do every day is really appreciated from everybody in our community, so thank you for everything you do. Yes, so, I'll need a motion to accept the 2021 fire service study?
I move to accept the 2021 fire service study.
Second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, four zero. Thank you again for everything, and thank you, men and women, for what you're doing out there. Thank you very much. All right, number six. Presentation of the 2022 Minimum Municipal Obligation to the Township Pension Fund. Ms. Bondry, we'll give you a second to take the mic.
Thank you. Good evening. As mentioned, I'm Mega Benjari, I'm the Finance Director for Middletown Township. Today, I'm going to present to you the 2022 MMO. Before I begin, I did want to give a statement about the 2021 pension aid amounts. We did receive note that the Office of Auditor General released the pension state amount, and the adjusted value actually is $4,797.28. This is actually a 2.6% decrease from 2020, and a 6.3% decrease from 2019, so we are going to see a little bit of a decrease in our state aid. We should be getting that payment on September 20, 2021, and we'll release more information on the exact amounts once we get that, but I just wanted to let everyone know about that. As far as 2022, our 2022 MMO is based on our actual value, valuation from January, January 1st, 2021, and it was prepared by municipal finance partners, our actuary. The estimated contribution, as you have in front of you, for the non-uniform pension plan is $470,246, and the estimated minimum contribution for the police pension plan is $3,266,198. This is a decrease from last year. We have less members in, in our plan, and more going into drop from the police side, therefore, it is a decrease overall. Any questions? There is no action required, this was just, you know, here for, as a statement, but we wanted to make sure we get that out to everyone.
Is there any question for Ms. Bondry?
No.
Thank you, Mega.
All right, thank you so much. Have a great evening.
All right, moving on to... Number seven, consideration of adopting the 2021 Climate Action Plan. Mr. Valla?
Good evening again, supervisors. So, to follow up on a presentation we made at the, two meetings ago, this would be on August 16th, the township has prepared a climate action plan, and again, this is done in coordination with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and with the board's leadership. Development of this plan was charged to the township's EAC, Environmental Advisory Council, as well as some staff and students from Wilkes University. We presented the plan on the August 16th meeting. Since that time, it has been made available online and here in the building, and we advertised once with the Bucks County Courier-Times, just for good measure, to make sure that everyone understood that the plan is available. We haven't received any comments back, therefore, we are recommending final adoption of the plan for tonight. And I did want to note, I did say last time, this would be the first plan adopted by any municipality in Bucks County, which is still true, but I believe this would be the first, this would make us the first township in southeastern Pennsylvania through this program to adopt a climate action plan.
So we're not only the lead here in Bucks County, but we're the lead here in the southeastern part of Pennsylvania?
Yes, there's been one borough, and then, of course, the city of Philadelphia, but we would be the first township to do so.
Very good. I, I kind of appreciate the work that you did with this, Mr. Valla, and the fact that we are out front on this, and we are leading, and hopefully, other townships and boroughs can follow what we're doing with this. Does anybody have any comments for Mr. Valla? Okay, Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. I know, definitely want to refer everyone to the August 16th meeting. We're not going to go through the plan in depth tonight, but it really is quite something, and it lays out an ambitious vision for the future of climate action in Middletown. So, hope folks take some time to go through the plan, either on the website, or watch the presentation that they went through on August 16th. But I also just wondered, Mr. Valla, if you could address the note I see in our, in our meeting packet here. My question back on August 16th was, how do we make this real? How do we, you know, make this more than a pretty plan? And I saw a note regarding the implementation that I was really excited about, and I hope that you could address about getting some support on the implementation.
Sure. So since we are one of the earlier municipalities in our class of climate action plan developers for our year, we actually have been chosen recently by DEP to be paired with a student, this time from East Stroudsburg University, to help with some early implementation. So, we're actually going to be meeting with that student later this month, and talking through some options for getting some public education efforts going together, and really kind of hitting some of the low-hanging fruit in our plan, as we gear up for some of the more challenging long-term elements.
That's great. I think that's great, and we get so much energy from student groups that support us, because this is what they're really committed to, and they're finding a way in their careers, and trying to see how they can make the theory they're learning about become real. So, I think it's a, a great pairing to have that student from East Stroudsburg support us, similar to how Wilkes University has supported us through the initial planning phase. So thank you for all the work that you've done arranging all that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I move to adopt the 2021 Middletown Township Climate Action Plan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, four zero. Thank you, Mr. Valla. Number eight, consideration of approving the following 2022 RDA Grant Program Applications Resolution. Ms. Tealie Coles?
Thank you. You have in your packets this evening information and resolutions for six separate RDA grants. The first is for Public Works Department, Police Department vehicles, Public Works Department vehicles, police technology, which is a drone. And then we have applications from the Rescue Squad, and we have applications from both William Penn and Pendel Fire Company. The total grants are approximately $700,000. These resolutions would authorize that we send the applications into the RDA, they're due just at the end of the month. So, as far as prioritization, typically, the board will adopt the resolutions this evening, authorizing the application, and then in the applications, we identify the priorities. Staff is recommending that we, as we typically do, prioritize police vehicles and public works vehicles, then police technology. We would recommend the Rescue Squad ambulance chassis, and then both William Penn and Pendel are both asking for the same amount for the same item, so we would sort of make them together a priority. I'm happy to answer any questions with your authorization, we'll get this moving, and typically, we find out in November what the, what the response is.
I don't know about the rest of the board, if it's open for discussion, but I'm fine with prioritizing the way Ms. Tealie Coles recommended with the police vehicles, the public works vehicles, the police technology, the Pendel Middletown Emergency Squad, and then William Penn and Pendel. I'm fine with that? I don't know how everybody else feels?
I'm good with that.
I agree.
So, can we get a motion to adopt the resolution for the RDA?
I will move to adopt the following 2022 RDA Grant Program Application Resolutions, Resolutions Number 21-25R, 21-26R, 21-27R, 21-28R, 21-29R, and 21-30R.
Second. There's a motion and a second to adopt the grant applications for the RDA. Is there any board questions? Any public questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, four zero. Moving on to number nine, consideration of appointing Jacqueline Ratner to the Planning Commission. As everyone is aware, Kieran Hastings had to resign prior to the last meeting, and we are recommending Jacqueline Ratner to the Planning Commission. So I would make a motion to seat Jacqueline Ratner on the Planning Commission?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any public questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, four zero. Moving on to other business, Mr. Kessler?
Nothing further this evening, thank you.
Mr. Esposito?
Nothing.
Ms. Tealie Coles?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kezak?
Nothing, thanks.
Ms. Corple?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Strauss?
Nothing, thank you.
I, I'll just add that I, I hope everybody can join us, or some of us can join us, at the Veterans Memorial Dedication this weekend. It does seem like it's going to be a very well-attended event, and I hope people can come out and just honor our veterans that gave everything during the Vietnam War. So, again, join us at 11 to 11:30. Parking is at the Albert Schuyker and Sandberg School, you will be bused over there, the